I'm just kidding. It's four o'clock. I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. The first order of business is the approval of the August 23rd, 2023 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of the University of Lynchburg for a conditional use permit in an R2 low-medium density residential district to allow the conversion of student housing facilities to office space at 333, 335, and 337 College Street.
I need to accuse myself of accomplishing a trace on the sidewalk for the university.
For both the first two items.
And I'll begin the same.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of Planning Commission, the subject properties are located at 233, 335, and 337.
College Street, and each parcel is approximately 172 thousandths of an acre for a total of approximately 516 thousandths of an acre. Each total, each parcel contains a structure that was constructed in the late 1930s and has been used for student housing since 1989. The properties are surrounded by other parcels owned by the University of Lynchburg. The purpose of the petition is to allow the conversion of these three structures from student housing to office space for professors. The comprehensive plan 2013 to 2030 recommends a low-density residential use for the subject properties. Public and private institutional uses compatible in scale with single-family homes may be included in these areas. The properties are zoned R2 low-medium density residential district. College, again, college and university uses are permitted in this district upon approval of a CUP from council. The properties located at 333, 335, and 337 College Street have been used by the university, again, since 1989. The university plans for an enrollment of approximately 2,600 students to remain consistent and owns all surrounding properties around the proposed offices. And allowing their conversion to support the university's needs should not have any negative impact on the area. The city's technical review committee reviewed the concept plan on August 22nd. Comments were minor in nature and would be approved prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the office buildings. The Planning Division recommends approval of the petition.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you'll come forward and sign your name, please. And state your name, too, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I'm Chris Burnley, Vice President for Business and Finance for the university. Do you want an address and phone number and all of that? Okay.
Just happy to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this project is necessary for us to be able to provide adequate classroom space for our nursing students. Right across the road from these three houses is the McMillan Building. And currently, the McMillan Building has three wings. And the two outer wings serve as faculty offices. And our nursing students have a very small space for a break room, a very small space for a computer lab, and pretty cramped classroom spaces, et cetera. So what we, when we were going through in the accreditation process for nursing, we looked at this building and just sort of thought outside the box, well, what, what can we do to make this better? A better space for our students? And it became clear to us that really, we were taking up too much of the building with our faculty offices. And so we're moving the faculty offices out of there, across the road, to these three houses. Have a very nice plan to rehab those houses, improve that area and the roadway and everything, landscaping and all of that. And then to take all three wings of the McMillan Building and turn them into classrooms in the middle, a lab space on the left, and on the right, student breakout spaces, and a computer lab, and a kitchen area, et cetera, break room. So that's the, the real purpose behind the project.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep, we, we might call you back up for some questions, but thank you so much. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody in opposition? Anybody opposed to the position, the petition? So we will close the hearing, the public hearing, and discuss. I just, I, just curious, do you have students currently living there?
Should I come back up?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, yes, thank you, sorry. Yeah, just so the mic can pick you up.
So the question is, do we have students currently living in those three houses? No, because we had planned on doing this project. They were living in there last semester.
So otherwise vacant?
Yes. They're vacant this semester.
How many faculty offices are you going to put into the three houses?
I think in total, there's 14.
And are all of those coming from across the street, or are they? Wow.
Yes.
That's taken up a lot of room.
Absolutely. That was the problem. And I'll tell you, well, is this recorded?
It isn't.
I'll, I'll say, I mean, the faculty at first didn't want to move. And, you know, they, they didn't want to change. And we had to work through that process with them just to help them see the potential for their students. And also for the potential for them, because these are going to be very nice office spaces for them as well.
I think it's pretty straightforward, from my standpoint. I mean, you've taken offices that existed across the street. You haven't changed the flavor of the neighborhood, if you will. And it looks like, I mean, I appreciate people not wanting to have to clean out their offices. I am sure that there's probably an archaeological dig worth of old papers and things in there at any given time. But I think to have, you know, new space is going to be positive for, for the faculty. And the new space, obviously, for the students will make it a lot better. So I'm 100% in favor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I'm pleased and get so excited with, with the growth that, that you guys are doing, especially with post-grad work and, and all of that. It's just quite a coup for Lynchburg.
I, I think it's a great idea. I don't, I, I see no ill effects to the neighborhood from it. Certainly, it's probably an improvement. And I would, well, I would make a motion to approve, but...
I would second it.
Any other discussion?
I'm just curious, with just the parking situation, I'm just, I mean, otherwise, I think it's a great project. I'm just, literally just curious, where, are you going to tackle that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Faculty will be able to park behind the houses. There's a, a central parking lot behind those that will work out very well for that. Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. The next order of business is the petition of University of Lynchburg for a conditional use permit in an R4 high-density residential district to allow the conversion of a student housing facility to a laundry facility at 504 Westwood Avenue.
Thank you. Members of Planning Commission, this is a very similar petition in front of you again. The subject property at 504 Westwood Avenue contains approximately 206 thousandths of an acre. The purpose is to allow the conversion of the existing structure to a laundry facility for the use of University of Lynchburg students. The comprehensive plan currently recommends a low-density residential use for the subject property. Public and private institutional uses compatible in scale are included in these areas. The property is zoned R4 high-density residential district. College and university uses, similar to the last one, are permitted in this district upon approval of a CUP by council. The property has been used for student housing since 2001, and it contains a one-story wood-framed vinyl structure built in 1910. The subject property is surrounded by other parcels, also owned by the university, and are used for student housing. TRC reviewed this concept plan on August 22nd as well, and comments were minor in nature. Planning Division recommends approval.
Who is here in favor? Come on back up. And state your name again, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Chris Burnley, Vice President for Business and Finance for the University of Lynchburg. I'd just like to say that this project is necessary because the houses that we utilize in that area previously had individual washers and dryers in them for our students. And our, we actually have laundry provided by a third party called, named Caldwell &amp; Gregory. And you can imagine having commercial, a commercial washer and dryer in a house for like, three students, it just didn't make financial sense. So Caldwell &amp; Gregory refused to continue to do that and said, "We have to consolidate it somewhere." And we spent a long time looking for the right place with parking, and there's a parking lot right across from this, this space. There's also parking available behind it. Spent a long time looking for the, the perfect space for a consolidated laundry facility for our students. It's just for our students. And this, this was the best spot.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the petition? Opposition? So we'll close the public hearing, and, Chris, you might want to just stay up there and we, see if we have any questions?
So how many? I think you said this, and I just missed the number. How many individual locations had, had laundry facilities currently?
Yeah, there were about, I, I can tell you that we have undergrad students, and we had them in 52 houses. And the majority of those had individual laundry. Now, we're not putting 52 washers and dryers in this space because, you know, they're not going to be used that much. I think it's, is it 14? Eight washers, eight dryers? Eight washers, eight dryers. Yeah, and they, there's, they have a really cool system where the students can go out and look to see when it's available, if it's available. And, you know, they go over and we plan to have a, a little break room in there for the students to study and vending machines and that sort of thing.
That's just one of those interesting things, having had kids in college. That was probably not a real well-attended area, at least for my son. Yeah, thank God his sister was there. Shout out to you, Nan. But anyway, yeah, I just, I mean, it makes perfect sense from a financial sense. Eight? I guess my problem is eight. I mean, it's not like it's any of my business or anything, but how did we come up with eight?
I think that Caldwell &amp; Gregory did the analysis to, to determine what would be appropriate.
Because it seems like if you have 52 locations, that's, you know, over 100 students using eight, so it's... Yeah, if they're all like my son, that would be no problem. You've probably got twice as many as you need. But, um, yeah, that works out.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to locate it. It doesn't seem like it's all, all together that far from where, you know, I was impressed with the fact it was centrally located on the campus. So I think that makes sense.
Are there any other washer/dryer areas?
Yeah, there are scattered across campus. Our main campus in Tate and Mon, and our larger buildings, there are separate washer and dryer facilities in each of those buildings. Yeah, this, this facility is, is specifically geared toward those students who are living in the houses in that area.
And I'm guessing you have to have some sort of...
Key card or something to get in?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then the, I'm assuming parking is going to be pretty well-maintained with what you currently have there in place for that?
Yes.
Yeah, seems pretty straightforward. I'd make a motion to, to approve the, proposal is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, the next order of business is the petition of Sundance Design and Build LLC for a conditional use permit in an R3 medium-density residential district to allow the construction of 44 townhomes at 532 and 536 Leesville Road.
Thank you. Members of Planning Commission? There we are. The subject property is located at 532 and 536 Leesville Road, containing approximately 5 and 875 thousandths acres. The purpose is to allow the construction of 44 townhomes in an R3 medium-density residential district. The city's future land use map recommends a medium-density residential use for the subject properties. These areas are characterized by small lots, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhomes at densities of up to 12 units per acre. Where neighborhoods already exist, infill development should be at a compatible density and housing type. The property is zoned R3 medium-density residential district. Townhomes are allowed in this district upon approval of a CUP. The purpose of the petition is to allow the townhomes, as part of the overall development, and additional eight duplexes fronting Leesville Road. Additional eight duplexes fronting Leesville Road and Misty Mountain Road would also be constructed. The duplex units are, are permitted in R3 by right and do not require special approval. The property contains a mixture of residential structures and outbuildings and was annexed into the city in 1976. The property is bound to the north by apartments and an institutional use, which is a church, by townhomes to the south. To the east, there are single-family household residences and vacant land. And to the west, across Misty Mountain Road, are apartments. In summary, the property located at 532 and 536 Leesville Road should not impact the area negatively. Again, the future land use map recommends medium-density residential, which is up to 12 units per acre. The project would contain 16 duplex units and the 44 townhome units, and the total development being 60 units, which would be below the threshold recommended by the future land use map, which in this case would equate to about 70 units as the maximum. It's also currently zoned R3, which permits townhomes upon approval of a CUP by council. And again, given the surrounding area with the townhomes and the apartments on two sides, it should fit well. The technical review committee reviewed the concept plan on August 22nd, and comments have or will be addressed prior to final site plan approval. The Planning Division recommends approval of the petition with the condition written in your packet.
Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak in favor of the petition? If you'll come forward, state your name and sign in, please.
My name is Bryce Harker. I'm the managing member of Sundance Design and Build LLC. Thank you, Rachel. She took everything I had to say, though, so... So just as an overview, I guess, we have this split up into sections. Section 1, which is on the west, on Misty Mountain Road, is the duplexes, five duplexes, which is on the by-right use of the land. And then Section 2 up on Leesville Road is three duplexes, which also is on the by-right use of the land. What we're here today to discuss is the central part, which is Section 3, which would be our request for a conditional use permit on the R3 designation. We also, at Project South and East, are going to renovate for resale 536 Leesville Road. That's a single-family structure planned south and east. The 44 townhomes are, in lieu of what we, our preliminary studies are saying are going to be 16 duplex buildings, which would be 32 units. So we're only requesting an increase of 12 total units. We would go from 8.1 to 10.1 units per acre. The flume, like Rachel was saying, already shows medium density. We feel like we're adhering. Our proposal, we feel, is, is pretty consistent with the R3 zoning. That's why we're not asking to rezone, we're just asking for the, the conditional use. We also just wanted to mention that on the interior here, there is a potential, we, we can't know now for this to be 100% owner-occupied. In, in the duplexes, that is, it's, that, that wouldn't be the case. It, it would be that, in, in the event that an owner purchased it and then occupied one side of it, half of it would be a rental property. But there's no way for us to know if it will be 100% owner-occupant. But it, it could potentially be. We also feel that it would be more if, if, if we are granted the conditional use. Again, Rachel, thank you. The, the north, Beulah Baptist Church and the institutional use there, B3, R3. North and west, RE8 Lynchburg, they've got the B5, R3 on the north, and then the R4C on the project west. Then, south of our project, we're adjacent to the Heritage Court condominiums, which were an R3 designation, and they got their conditional use permit. And then just at the end of Misty Mountain here, it's kind of a little bit off the plan. But the new Heritage Point townhomes are, are under construction and doing great right now. That is also an R3 designation, and they got their conditional use permit for townhome construction as well. We did, it was requested, and we, in our summary, we have a traffic study which is showing a 432 trip in, that would be 216 out onto Misty Mountain, and 216 out onto Leesville Road in the morning. Well, I'm sorry, that would be 216 out, 216 in. It would be an impact of 108 to Misty Mountain and 108 to Leesville if it was a perfect split. The infrastructure is going to be serviced, a main sewer trunk line. Everything here is going to be sewer on city water, a trunk line down to Misty Mountain Road. The power's already been upgraded, the stormwater will be managed on-site by two ponds and the purchase of nutrient credits. In summary, we think that, our stance is that the impact on density is minimal and that the land use is consistent with the flume, consistent with adjacent properties. It's a good transition between business and commercial on Timberlake Road, apartments, and then more kind of a heavy density to our west, business and single-family residential to our east, and then the already-approved conditional use permits for townhouse construction to our south and southwest. We feel that the project is consistent with the flume. So if you guys have any questions or...
Sure, we will. I'll call you back up in just a moment. Or you might stay there if, if there's like... Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? Sorry? Oh, any emails? Okay. Okay, we will close the public hearing and ask questions.
I have a question.
Okay, I was just, as I read through the proposal, and this might, actually might be directed more at Rachel. Something I thought was odd, and I might be able to get clarification. It says that the, that there had been a petition in 2014, November 11th, it said, "We approved a CUP for 121 townhouses at 542, 550, probably 550, 554, 572. This permit expired, and the current petition is in lieu of this one." But I think that those have been built, correct?
That looks like a holdover comment from a previous report. So that is not...
Those are...
Yes, that is a separate petition.
All right.
We'll get that corrected. Thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to see the connectivity between the roads there, between Misty Mountain Road and Leesville Road. I don't think any of these, do any of these other complexes have connections between those roads? Or is this the only one? Do you know?
The one to the south only connects to Leesville. The, one to the north isn't a through lot, so that only connects to Misty Mountain. And the one across the street only has a connection to Misty Mountain, so...
Yeah, I think Heritage Point has connection both ways, but they're, they have a blockade there at the end of Misty Mountain. So you can, those are only going out to Leesville for now. I don't know when they'll open it.
Right, it's under construction, isn't it?
That's right.
They'll create a connector between the two roads.
Like Winters. I have a couple of questions, when you get a moment. Is there a current plan to incorporate an HOA?
Yes, there will be an HOA in the event that we, that we held, right?
There will be an HOA regardless.
There will be?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. Could you speak to, well, maybe the next question will kind of answer that. Has it been decided how many of these, these townhouses are going to be set aside for individual ownership, sale, occupancy, whatever? And how many are being held in reserve by the developer to keep as managed rental units?
The, the plan, as we stand here today, is to sell all of them for profit.
It raises me my third and final thing. Since it's a conditional use permit, the city had something happen a little while back up on Graysmill Road. And we had a mixed use going in there, went through the process. Planning Commission went through, city council got approved. All the permits obtained. It was supposed to be a mixed use, but it got sold before development happened. And now what we've got is a gigantic apartment complex going in there. And there's nothing anybody can do about it. Conditions going on something like this might be suitable. That might prevent that. I mean, you could say the city may have gotten a little snookered on that when I've talked to some people about it. It was totally unexpected. I'm not saying that, that's going to happen in this case. I just, maybe in this case, we want to make sure it doesn't happen again. Maybe some kind of condition that goes on that they have to be, a certain percentage, 75%, whatever, have to be set aside for individual sale and ownership as a condition for this use of this property. Whether, how we would do that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think...
I mean, I think that's nice. I think it's good. I think the, the problem, and I've seen this with a lot of places, is, I was just telling Dave, I'm working with three different spaces right now that were built and marketed as affordable housing that are all owned by out-of-town landlords that are Airbnb-ing them or using them as rental units. So I think that's, that's a tough one. I think where I feel like there might be protections, I think if this gets sold before it's developed, the conditional use actually doesn't pass along with the new owner, does it?
Well, so I think, I think what Mr. Gammon's referring to is that the individual units should be owned. The challenge with that is having individual ownership of the townhomes is what Mr. Rogers is referring to, is that you can sell them to, you could, you could sell each one of you seven, and half of you might rent them out, or all of you might rent them out, or you all might live there. There's just, there's no way of, of knowing, right?
But that's at 44, say you have 44 owners, individual, and I know that's just hypothetically, we wouldn't actually have some of them. But for example, if you had 44 owners of 40/40 units versus two owners of 40/40 units, it's much easier for those 44 landowners to keep that neighborhood from declining because there's pressure, there's an HOA, there's individuals on either side of each unit that keeps that from happening as much as a block owned by a corporation. And you can't necessarily prevent the ownership of somebody like Blackrock or Vanguard, you know, doing this all the time, coming in, buying huge chunks of whole neighborhoods. But at least, without preventing the development of it, it seems like the city should, should at least put a little caveat on there that says, "Hey, this is a great idea, but we want to make sure this doesn't happen again." And how to do that, not, not fully certain. But it may be something just as simple as putting a condition on the use permit. And your question is, does it carry over to a new owner if they purchase it? It seems like that runs with the land, doesn't it? If you're... If you're...
So, a conditional use permit is valid for two years.
So, it can be sold, and then another developer do the same thing with it, under the, okay, yeah.
But it's not permanent for everyone until the zoning is changed again.
So, if they held off for two years, then theoretically it vanishes?
Yeah.
It does become challenging when we set conditions to, how do we enforce those? Just trying to kind of run it through in my mind. And it may be something we could ask the city attorney about, and, you know, obviously all this discussion would be reflected in the minutes as well.
In lieu of that, what is the willingness of the developer to make some kind of a personal commitment that they're not, you're not going to sell this property, you're going to develop and sell it? And I understand that's just word versus word kind of thing, you know, but...
Yeah, but we also have, in our corner, an advantage we have is that we've sought and secured financing for this project. I've already invested over $200,000 in clearing and developing the land, upgrading the power. This company has now a three-year track record of only building on land that we acquire. We don't have any holdings. So, our intent is not to flip the land to anyone. It is definitely, our intent is definitely to build this project out, and in fact, we've already started.
Just, so I'm clear, and I have limited experience with HOAs, but it seems like the, or the pushback against maintenance of the property and conduct of residents on the property would all fall under the ramp, or all fall under the regulations of the HOA anyway. I mean, so granted, you could have, you know, minimal ownership or, you know, a lot of different or fewer corporate, but the fact of the matter is, is that from the standpoint of how activities ran on that property on a given basis, it would fall under the HOA, correct?
That's right.
And it doesn't have the HOA structure too.
Sure. But I'm saying that's...
Could be a weighted vote in the HOA, depending how many units you own. Again, depends on how it's structured, so...
I had just a quick question about the traffic study. Just, I know you guys did the traffic study, and usually we see the traffic study and see, you know, the results and that kind of, and I don't necessarily need to see it, but I'm just curious that traffic study was...
So, in this case, what the traffic engineer requested was a trip generation study, which is basically a calculation showing whether or not you're going to need a traffic study. The trip generation in this case showed 428 trips per day. The threshold for a traffic study being required is 500 trips per day. So, essentially, the trip generation study shows, the trip generation calculation shows that they don't need a traffic study.
Does the trip generation study, is that...
That is something that the petitioner provides and then is shared with the city's engineering division to...
But it's by, like, a company that...
Yes, it's a professional engineer. It's sealed, yeah.
It was provided to us by our several engineer.
And, you know, speaking to what you were talking about earlier, I mean, the property's already zoned, so by right, they can, they can put in, I know they're asking for a few more, but it seems to me it's a little different than what happened over there because we changed, or the planning commission, or the city changed the zoning of that piece of land based on the CUP.
The expectation, unless I'm mistaken, correct me, was that it would be developed as X. And I think the conditional use permitting process in this case was originally designed, if you read it, to create conformity with the surrounding residential neighborhood and not to create a non-ownership environment. You know, that's why the conditional use permit is attached to this zoning in this case, in my view, you know? So, to dismiss that, I think, if this, for example, were just an apartment complex, would be a mistake, and especially would do a disservice to the citizens living around the surrounding area. But in this case, he's saying they're going to sell all the units. These are going to be, regardless of what happens to them in five years, the intent seems consistent with the intent of the zoning. To me, it does.
I appreciate that connectivity, too. I think that'll make a big difference. You know, first, I thought, well, there's no signal on Timberlake and Misty Mountain, I think Misty, whatever that is, but I don't really think that matters because I think people who, who live, well, they'll be going out, probably turning right on Lee'sville, they have a choice to go down Timberlake. I think it makes a big difference in the traffic. Because some of these, when you look at these places that are so dense around it, with that one X, it'd be really nice if, I think you were saying, they could actually find a way to give more access to other, other complexes around there, but I think it's a well-done plan.
I have a question about densities. The total of 60 is below that recommended by the flume, but what's the threshold for R3?
So, R3 is 10.89 units per acre. So, 10.89 times the 5.87 gets you about 63.9 maximum density units per acre, well, total units, actually. And you're at 60.
That's right.
And by the way, Tom, the Misty Mountain Road, they can only turn right there.
It's only a right out, anyway?
Yeah, it's a right out. Well, there's no left, that's all.
No crossover.
Unless they want to go in the wrong lane, they can only...
You can't go left there.
Yeah.
And then, the parking, they're satisfying the one parking space per unit for the zoning, but what would be the requirements if this was zoned where townhouses are allowed? Would it be more? I mean, if we have townhouses being built, is it still just one parking space per unit?
Whether it's apartments or townhomes, it's one space per unit.
It's a cruddy, unrealistic speaker.
I think in this case...
Yeah, 44 units and 93 spaces.
Yeah, we're protecting well over, well over that.
But you've got about two spaces per unit.
Yeah.
Well, I saw concerns, I mean, Lee'sville is really blowing up. If you drive it, I mean, it is, and I just, and it's contributing to some of the issues we've been talking about with Timberlake and everything else. So, I also, I think we need to keep in mind how we view the flume, because in the past, when the flume doesn't back up the petition, we say, "Well, the flume is not meant to be handled on a parcel-by-parcel basis." When it does support the petition, we really are aggressive about pointing that out. So, there's definitely a lack of consistency with how we use the flume in making our decisions. And it is meant to be a guide and not a parcel-by-parcel basis, but we tend to disregard it when it doesn't support it, and then we make a big deal about it when it does.
And if it doesn't support the request, you know, we'll point that out, say, you know, the flume is asking for something else, and if you desire to change the flume, what is the justification? Then ultimately, of course, it's up to Planning Commission to make the recommendation and council to approve or deny either, either the flume and/or the zoning or CUP.
I mean, I agree with the Lee'sville and the traffic situation. We, and we've all heard that, and we've heard from, from the public that they're worried about it, it's already bad, and, and that's why I brought up the traffic, or the lack of the traffic study was, I mean, if I, if I'm looking at how many units there are there, you know, 60, you know, two to three people living there, I would imagine more than 493 trips, which, I mean, it's just right there on the threshold, right? So, you know, I don't know.
Well, you all know how I feel about additional rental units in the city, particularly on the Timberlake quarter, but in the south-central part of the city, and I do believe 100% it is contributing to serious traffic problems and notable crime increases based on what we're seeing. I'm not a fan, and so, I don't think I've made any secret of that. I'm not opposed personally, and I say this out loud just because you guys know where I stand, I want to speak to what you said, Dave, that when it comes to individual ownership of these things, in this case, the, the threshold of, what, 500 daily trips being the threshold, this actually falls below that. Okay, we can debate that. However, 60 rental units versus 60 or so owned units creates an environment where nobody's doing anything to do anything about anything. That's my problem with creating more and more rentals in certain parts of the city, is that non-ownership, non-stakeholders don't do anything to contribute to bettering, not that there's no, not anybody in there, but as a whole, aren't fighting for the improvement of the roads, and aren't fighting for the widening of the roads, aren't fighting for the improvement of the city. They're just there to do whatever until they can buy a house in the county or whatever. People who buy a townhouse actually have a stake, an ownership stake, where they're at. And if it eventually proves that traffic is getting worse along, and it will, I mean, 60 or 80 cars, is that going to make that much difference? I don't know. If we continue doing this kind of thing, yeah, it might be substantial. But in the end, personally, the ownership factor for me is the driver for change if change is an eventual need. Rental properties do not provide the drive for the changes that are needed when you have increases in traffic and crime. So, I don't support those. In this case, personally, I would be supportive of this because based on your word, this is a development intended to be sold to owners. If you were saying something different, I would be vying to disapprove this and whatever I could do to oppose it, you know? But in this case, personally, I don't have a problem with it for those reasons.
Mr. Johnson, would you mind if I, also, I just want to validate a point that you're making, I just wanted to add, add to it. The trips, the traffic and the trip, like, anyone's concerns as on or around traffic, the by right use of the land is going to be with a certain number of duplexes, so the traffic is set to increase. I think what we're saying is that, that the density and therefore the traffic is pretty minimal. That's for you guys ultimately to...
Yeah, and I agree with Chuck. I'm happy to see more, you know, townhomes and options for people to actually purchase. I think that's great. But Rachel, I'm just curious, like, who, who creates the 500 threshold, like, 500 trips? And when does that change? Like, when, and does it change? I mean, when, you know, there are so many, everything's developed and there's only, you know what I mean? When, when does that 500 threshold change and who's in charge of it?
So, my understanding is that is, that is determined by the city's traffic engineering division. And, yeah, it, we've had a lot of conversations about, you know, if you're the last guy in, versus the first guy, you know, where that leaves you. And I think, I think to, you know, to kind of hit on what was, what Mr. Harker mentioned and Mr. Peralta mentioned, is that the density in R3 could, could be this anyway. You could achieve pretty much what they're trying to do if you could make the layout work, you know, with duplexes or tiny houses or whatever. You would have about the same amount of, about the same amount of units, and it wouldn't require, you know, the conditional use permit or rezoning or any kind of public hearing. It could be by right. So, I think that's something to, something to consider.
What's the price range expected to be for the sale of properties?
We're expecting to be somewhere between $270,000 and $300,000 for the size of a duplex unit.
And somewhere between $280,000 to $310,000 for a townhouse.
Can you remember any?
I don't have any with me today, no. But I don't know if you have seen Heritage Point, but we're, we're emulating the aesthetic appearance of the exterior of those. Yeah, it's a combination of brick and stone on the exterior, mixed with vinyl, about 50/50 there. So, what's that?
Three bedrooms?
Yes, ma'am. Three bedrooms, two and a half baths, two-story on a slab. Everything, everything there's, fits that bill.
Chuck, if I can ask, I appreciate what your, your explanation. If this was a petition to switch to R4 apartments, then you'd be against it?
100%.
Yeah, okay. That's a, that's a good distinction to make. And it, yeah.
I don't know if you guys can see those. So, you're looking, you're talking about this right here, right? Something, does that look similar, what you're talking about?
Should we pop 5600? It should be that, that's right.
Does that look right or no?
Yeah, that's a rendering, if it is. His are turning out a little different than that. What is the, what's the 55600?
55600.
Yeah, that's where they are. It's Chris Long story. We're getting 5500.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I think it's...
Rachel Scott here. Is there one in the hall?
Unfortunately, no, because this is broken. They're nice. Sorry for the folks at home, I know that probably doesn't look like anything.
Well, I think, you know, it, and I understand the misgivings of rental property, and it's not anything that we're going to, we're going to solve, but I do think that Chuck brings up important points. In this case, to me, it fits exactly what the land would be used for. The land's going to be used for that. I would support this project, and I'd make a motion that we accept it as it's written.
Okay, any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and good luck with city council.
Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Is there any other business?
We don't have any, any new things. Thank you again for participating in the conference of plan kickoff a couple of weeks ago with our economic development authority. I think that went well. We will also be putting out, soon as we have the schedule finalized, we'll be putting out the four workshop dates that the public can attend this fall. So, we look forward to that.
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now? I did not see any items, but we'll double-check and let you know for your meeting on the 27th.
And somebody asked me recently about the, that hotel project across the bridge that we approved a while ago.
And ago.
Yeah, have you heard anything new on that?
We have had some conversations with them. They have not formally submitted anything yet, so I know everyone's kind of excited about that one, so...
Okay.
I would move that we adjourn.
All right.